Well, I'm gonna call it the order. This is the June 9th, 2021 Nottingham, New Hampshire Planning Board Meeting. Due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of COVID-19, the Governor's 2020 Emergency Order Number 12 issued pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. And as extended by Executive Order 2021-08, the Nottingham Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting as follows. The link is on the Nottingham Planning Board website, or there is telephone access for you to call in. 301-715-8592, meeting ID 994-3489-3266. So, given nothing else, we will start the meeting. So we'll begin through a roll call of members that are here. Edward Veal, Vice Chairman, and I'll be chairing the meeting tonight as Mr. Grotenice had indicated he likely would not be able to attend. So I'll go around the room and call the other members. Ian McKinnon?
Here.
Charlene Anderson?
Here.
Sue Mooney?
Here.
Robert Davies is an alternate?
Here.
And I don't see any select board members. Gary Anderson indicated he would not be here tonight. So I think that's it for everyone. So I will, I'm going to seat Mr. Davies for Mr. Grotenice's chair, I mean, seat tonight. So he'll be participating and voting. Sorry, I'm just taking some notes. So we'll pick the cases in order. Oh, sorry.
Hey, this is Tyler. I'm here. I'm via phone tonight.
Got it. We'll, we'll change the label on your, your ID there.
Okay.
Thanks, Tyler. So we have six, six present. Alright, so the first case tonight is a public hearing for case number 21-009-LLA. Application for a lot line adjustment from Gail Bateman. Administrator of the estate of John Bateman and Alan and Marsha Putnam, represented by TF Moran, Inc., Seacoast Division. The property is located at 1012 and 14A Barrington Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map one, lots two, three, and four. And I failed to do so before. Also present tonight are the Planning Board, 90 Secretary Joanna Erin Darchuk, and our, our staff representation from Strat Regional Planning Commission, Jen Sis. So I will let the applicant give a brief narrative of the application, and then we'll have staff give us their comments about the review, and then we'll act on the application first. So do we have anybody here for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ernest Van der Paul with TF Moran.
Good evening. So if you could just give a, at this, at this level, just a quick kind of summary, without going into too much detail about it, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. I'd like to start, Mr. Chairman. Joining me tonight is Attorney Paul Podlowski. He is of counsel to the law firm of Simmons and Ortley of Hampton, New Hampshire, who are the attorneys for the estate of John F. Bateman, Jr. On behalf of our client, Gail Bateman, administrator of the estate, and on behalf of Alan and Marsha Putnam, owners of the property at 14A Barrington Road, we are here with an application for a lot line adjustment between the two adjoining properties. To summarize, in essence, a small portion of the house number 12 Barrington Road encroaches on the Putnam property. We're here with a lot line adjustment to correct that encroachment, along with a portion of the deck septic system. And there's also a retaining wall/sitting area that also encroaches. I'd love, also like to say that, pardon me, on May 18th, the Nottingham Zoning Board of Adjustment granted a variance from Article 2, Section C2B of the zoning ordinance to allow the reduction in frontage of the Putnam property from 200 feet to 175 feet. In summary, we're here tonight with a proposed lot line adjustment in an attempt to resolve an encroachment issue. We have been granted a variance to reduce the frontage of the Putnam property, and it is an equal exchange of land. Until the encroachment problem is resolved, both properties are unmarketable. The Bateman property is currently listed for sale to pay back taxes to the town, but no closing can occur until the encroachment problem is resolved by a lot line adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I'm Attorney Paul Podlowski, and as Mr. Vanderpoel indicated, working with Simmons and Ortley, we represent the Bateman estate. As he indicated, we didn't know, neither of the abutters, neither the Batmans nor the Putnams, realized that there was an encroachment. When the property was listed for sale on the recommendation of the survey, of the broker, a survey was done because the deed, the original source deed was back in 1964. It conveyed to Mr. Bateman's father and mother five different parcels. The descriptions weren't great, and since that time, some of those parcels were conveyed out. And so we really had to figure out, and then the mother died, and John Senior, the father, conveyed to his son, John Junior, in 2007. And then John Junior died in 2019, and that, that brings us to the estate. But because of the rather general descriptions in some of these deeds, we had a survey performed, and it was last September after the survey was presented that we realized an encroachment of a portion of the house at number 12 Barrington and the deck, as Mr. Vanderpoel has indicated, that there was an encroachment. And both of these abutting lots have 200 feet of road frontage, but in order to cure the encroachment and to comply with the 20-foot sideline setback requirement, we, we had the surveyor draw this new boundary line, which ends up taking 25 feet frontage from the Putnams and transferring it to the Batmans. But in order to, these are both non-conforming, pre-existing, non-conforming lots of record. And in order to keep the square footage of these pre-existing lots the same, we had the boundary adjustment to the rear of the property, transfer the equal amount of square footage to the Putnams so that the resulting lot sizes of Bateman and Putman, Putman, Putnam remain the same. There's no change in their square footage, and you can see on the plan that the, the Putnam house is at some distance from this. There will be no structures built within the, the area that is being transferred back and forth. And if you were driving by on the highway and you looked at it, you would see no difference at all. It's a wooded section. It's basically changing an imaginary line, which is the lot line adjustment, between Bateman and, and Putman in order to cure the encroachment problem so the Bateman, so the Bateman property can be sold. No title company is going to touch it and loan money to a buyer when there's an encroachment. We're trying to cure the encroachment.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you both. And I'll bring it back to staff. So the first course of action for the board is to act on completeness of the application. So I'll bring it to SRPC, based on the review of, of the application documents. Is it your opinion that the application is complete?
Yes, there are a couple of items that are noted in the staff report in regards to completeness. In particular, the, there is a parcel in Northwood that would be in a butter that is not identified on the plan set and should have been noticed as part of the application.
Okay, so that's something we can, in the past, we've been able to move, if that's the only thing, move forward with the application. But at that point, we usually have to hold another public hearing to allow for additional notice and
Correct.
Okay, alright. So that said, it looks like we would have, anybody would like to make a motion on completeness?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. So I'll make a motion, we find case number 21-009-LLA as complete?
Alright, that's Mr. McKinnon. Do we have a second?
I second.
Ms. Mooney, do we have any further discussion? I see none. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton? Can he unmute himself, Joanna, on the phone, or do you have to unmute him?
He can unmute himself. I'm asking him to, but there we go. You're good.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous, 600. So that brings it back to the, to the board, and I don't know if the applicant has received the staff review or not, but basically it looks like a possible butter was missed. So the legal, the, the information we've received on prior cases where a butter was missed was to hold off on the public hearing to allow for additional notice to go out and to continue the case to the next possible meeting. For us, our next meeting in June is no business. It's for election of officers because of our town meeting just occurred this week. So our next possible meeting would be July. Pulling that up. If anybody has July 14th, is that what I heard? July 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And usually if there's any new deliverables, they're at least a week ahead of time from that date. And Jen, is there any other, anything else I missed on that? Anything you recommend?
No, that is it. I would just, I advise the applicant to review the staff report. There is some question about lots two and three, whether that is one lot or two, and that needs additional clarification.
Mr. Vice Chair, can we speak to this for a second, please?
Yeah, we have to keep it. If a butter was missed, we do have to keep it kind of narrow in discussion just because we had to make sure that we honored the public hearing process.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the town of Northwood has never assessed the Bateman lot. Until the survey was done last September, it was not believed that any part of Bateman was in Northwood. The portion, the, one of those five parcels that Bateman acquired in 1964 was conveyed to Boyle. It was the Boyle out conveyance that was partially in Northwood and partially in Nottingham. But the remaining property of Bateman was thought to be entirely in Nottingham. The town of Northwood has never assessed the Batmans. The survey shows more accurately that that northwest corner apparently goes across the town line. It was a surprise to us to learn tonight that that little northwest triangular portion is somehow identified on the Northwood tax map because the Batmans have never been assessed by the town of Northwood.
Okay.
Chair, if I could add to that, please?
Yep.
The, the triangular portion of the Bateman properties shown as lots two and three falling over the line into Northwood was never known to exist, as Attorney Podlowski had said. Northwood's map, pardon, map 232, lot 23, we believe to be what's shown on our plan as map, as Nottingham, map one, lot one, which is currently owned by the town. Therefore, there would be no a butter that has been missed.
Jen, so I don't know if it's easier just to pull up the plan at this point to kind of show the area likely in a butter.
Give me a second to pull that up.
So I think that might be the easiest because obviously there are some lines in this area there a little bit complex.
Yeah, just give me one second to pull that up.
If I, if I may continue, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, let's, um, let's just hold on a moment until we pull up the plans that we can show so we make sure we're all talking about the same area.
This was Boyle, and this is Hodgson. Yes. Was all of this Hodgson down through here? Is that still Hodgson?
Hodgson owns everything, I mean. And so, see, these maps are made, this one I believe by hand, this by GIS data.
Yeah.
So when you try to line them up, they don't always do so.
Yeah.
And so I think this, this, I believe.
I mean, is it our belief that this was Hodgson? Well, that's our property, but Hodgson would be the butter around it.
Hodgson.
And then this would have been Boyle, which became
Boyle continues this way and this way.
Yeah, and Boyle became Nottingham.
Correct.
So this was formerly Boyle.
Right.
Which was an out
Now Nottingham.
Yeah, now it's Nottingham, right. Yeah. Now it's possible that the Boyle property
Please share my screen.
The Boyle property, that parcel was partially in Nottingham and Northwood.
It is, it's impossible it is.
Yeah, it was, it was an out conveyance by its father to the Boils.
Okay, I should be sharing my screen now. The parcel, so the, the triangle that you're referring to is, this is that triangle in not, in Northwood?
Yes.
And then this here, yellow highlighted, is, so if you take the town boundary up, it is not the Nottingham map one, one. So map one, lot one is shown as the town of Nottingham. This parcel here is Carl Bergeron.
What I'm suggesting that, that the Carl Bergeron parcel is what is a buts Nottingham, map one, lot one.
That may be, but there wasn't a notice sent to Carl Bergeron or this property owner.
Because then, from our standpoint, he is not a direct of butter.
It's co-terminus with the lot line.
Which is?
So the parcel that we're looking at is, it's this triangle and the, the Northwood
Right.
One that you're looking at right now comes here. This point here is co-terminus, so it is
I survey the, pardon me. By survey, the southeast corner of the Bergeron lot would be to the left or to the west, pardon me, of map one, lot one, now currently owned by the town of Nottingham. I, I know that's what it looks like on the Northwood map.
Right.
But if, if, when you look at the, the New Hampshire Granite GIS data, a lot of times, these, these lines do not line up per se due to differences in data. The, the assessors parcels on either side were not created by survey. They're an approximation. And I know this is what it looks like, however, with all due respect, by survey, Nottingham map one, lot one is the only direct of butter, along with the Hodgsons to the north.
So if I may, so that triangle, Jen, that's just that triangle there. Is that the same triangle that's at the top of this, of the top of this parcel map?
Yes.
Lot two?
Yes.
And that's part of this application, correct?
Correct. It's part of, it's the parcel that's, yeah, it's the subject parcel.
Are you saying, are you saying Northwood, map 232, lot 23 is part of this submission?
No, I'm saying it's adjacent right here. This corner here is, it's part of your parcel.
That is incorrect.
Not as it's drawn on the application to the property.
Right, so the, the application shows that corner is being part of, part of this application, map lot one, lot two, I believe. I wish we could kind of piece them together.
It is, that, that, the triangular piece of map one, lots two and three that falls within Northwood is part of the application, but it is, it is not Northwood map 232, lot 23.
I think that's where there's some conflict. I believe the town of Northwood were legally required to notify abutting towns, and I believe there's communication from them that they believe that, that this also is incorrectly labeled on their database as Nottingham when it's actually in fact this parcel, which would make, I mean, it makes sense, that drawing matches up exactly with the corner on, on the plan submitted, and then that Bergeron parcel would be in a butter.
Yeah, and, and even if this corner wasn't, you still have this one, I know it's minor, but you still have one point of contact where this parcel touches your parcel at this one point, at this vertex.
Okay. We, I, we understand your viewpoint. We believe the Northwood map is incorrect as far as lot 22, the relationship of lot 22 to the town line.
Okay. So, so on, I mean, we can't get into too much detail, but even on the submitted plan, I see, you know, the town line, and then there's a line. So I don't know if it's proposed that map one, lot one goes all the way to the top there, and somehow Nottingham owns
Map one, lot one would be over here.
The area that's
Pardon me?
The area that's on the plan, the submitted plan, the area above that, that would line Northwood, that's not labeled as to who owns that on the submitted plan.
Correct. Yeah, and I can pull that up.
But there's an additional lot line shown at that corner, the top, the top corner.
The, the, the lot lines that runs into Northwood and then back into Nottingham is the perimeter of the subject property submitted to you tonight. It is not a separate lot. May, maybe for assessment purposes, yes. For legal purposes, no.
My file's taking a moment to render, apparently. I apologize, my server just restarted, so I can't actually display the
Okay.
The plan set.
I do have it on my computer. Share it.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
Is that coming out?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so even still, so what our understanding is in talking with Northwood is that there's this, this parcel, so you've got the parcel that we were looking at is, yeah, Ian, is that your pointer? I don't know if I can point while you do it. So there's that, that portion up, yeah, that right there, that line right there. That's kind of that question. There's that vertex that we were just looking at. If you go just down from there where the town line crosses, that's that vertex that we were talking about just to the northwest, and within that obtuse angle would be that question, that parcel, the Bergeron parcel that's labeled in Northwood. So interestingly, I think what is happening when we look at the assessing data is that triangle that's part of your parcels that falls within Northwood. Northwood has labeled it as town of Nottingham. Or, yeah, it's, it's, they're kind of labeled as belonging to the town. Then the Bergeron parcel crosses into Nottingham. And so it's, no one's, no one's really paying attention to those or assessing those because they're in the other town, they're negligible portions of the lots. So it may be possible that what you have labeled as map one, lot one in Nottingham is that whole parcel, but that is not the property owner, according to Northwood. It would be Bergeron.
Okay, the Bergeron property does not touch the submitted property, though. Matt, if we could put the plan back up for a moment, please?
Yeah. It would at least be this obtuse angle, which doesn't have a, that, that parcel doesn't have, it's not identified on the plans.
It is map one, lot one.
So you're, you're indicating that Nottingham owns into the town of Northwood?
Yeah.
It was taken for tax, tax non-payment.
No.
Boyle, I believe.
If, if I may speak to it, historically, Bateman Senior conveyed a parcel which is shown as map one, lot one to Boyle. That parcel was partially in Nottingham and partially in Northwood. Apparently Boyle lost the property by tax sale. And so the part on the, now it shows map one, lot one on the Nottingham side of the border is being owned by the town of Nottingham, having been taken by collector's deed. Quite frankly, I don't know if Northwood took their portion of the Boyle property. My point is, the Boyle property was in both, partially in Nottingham and Northwood. So when you say if the town of Nottingham took the Boyle parcel for taxes, obviously they can only take the portion that's in Nottingham.
That, that may be so, but I'm, the missing a butter is the one that's within this obtuse angle at the northwest corner of the lot where there is a vertex that touches your parcel, whether you count the triangle that's in Northwood or not. And that parcel is 232, 22 or 3 is owned by Bergeron. It was, it was not noticed. Yeah, that right there.
So I guess my question is to the applicant, or what you, or what you're saying is that the area bound here in Northwood
Yeah.
That is part of map one, lot one, le, in the legal discretion. That is part of map one lot one, le, in the legal discretion.
So that, just so I'm clear, if I just, just, obviously I know that is not the same as.
That's the parcel.
Correct.
Yeah.
The yellow, the one, the piece that was just highlighted, the small triangle?
Yeah.
That is, that represents the portion of Nottingham's map one lot one that lies within the town of Northwood. And that, that would make the, uh, I forget the last name.
Yes, I'm just, I'm also having trouble seeing how this would continue out and create the triangle that you see.
It's not that triangle.
Right, so let's just bring it back, so if you, if, looking at this, the, this, let's leave this on the screen for a second, that, that map twenty-two and not in Northwood, the owner of that lot isn't listed as in a butter on the plan, wasn't noticed as, as far as we can tell, so that's, that's missed.
Yeah.
So we need to, that needs to get clarified and then legally noticed, and, so that we can actually hold the public hearing and have the further discussion on the lot line adjustment.
Understood.
And then I think, I think staff had some other review comments on there that, you know, would be germane, you know, if you can take a look at those, I think that would be, you know, make the meeting go a little bit smoother for the, the next one, so.
Okay.
Um, our first meeting that we have, again, our next meeting this month is, is a non-business meeting for election of officers and, and all that kind of fun stuff after our town meeting, our town meeting closes. So our next meeting is July fourteenth, if there were any new deliverables, uh, we like them at least a week ahead of time.
One week?
Just to give staff time to review it and get comments back and, you know, let you have the time to review those before the meeting if, if possible.
Okay.
So at this point, uh, like a motion, uh.
Hey, do you mind if I jump in real quick? I, I don't know if this would be helpful, but is there a way, and this is just to help for that meeting? I, I understand that, I think in your judgment, there might be some errors in terms of, I know there's some discrepancies with the GIS systems a lot because they're not based on deeds all the time. Is it possible, I think there's some confusion where we're looking at what we have, which is the GIS, and then obviously there's a survey record with your plan, is there a way to underlay these tax maps on your plan and possibly call out some of these discrepancies? Because I think we're seeing a triangle, which is this lot twenty-three, and it looks, and to us, I see this, I see that triangle. I don't know if it's as easy as you just being able to underlay the tax images underneath this, and then even if it's just in PDF, maybe just to help provide some clarification to everybody of where the errors are and what's what. I think there's just jumping between the two, and then obviously there's two different GIS systems we're bouncing to across the town line. That might, that might just help with that next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, what I'm seeing here on what was submitted in the plan set is matching the GIS um, in terms of those, those geometries, so, you know, so where you're looking at map, uh, one lot one, that's the Nottingham fraction, uh, that's missing, if you go back to that parcel in Northwood, it's that south, see that southeast corner that's kind of missing? Yeah, that's map one lot one, that's the Nottingham portion of that.
And that's what I'm seeing too, so if that's an error, I'm just not seeing how, I've just seen the, the geometry is matching up, so if there's any clarification, if there's a way to just, I don't know, use color or something on, underlay the plan, that might just be helpful for the next meeting, so we can have everything in front of us. If you feel it's the best.
All right, so, uh, if anybody'd like to make a motion to continue to July fourteenth at seven PM, that would be, uh, be good at this point.
Mr. Chair, this is, um, Mrs. Mooney, I move that we continue case number twenty-one dash zero zero nine dash LLA to July fourteenth at seven PM.
Is there a second? That's Mr. Davies.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, I'll take roll call, Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton? Wasn't prepared. I'll throw my vote, my vote is a yes, I'm just waiting for Mr. Eaton to make his, it's moot at this point, but. There we go.
Yes, is my vote.
All right, thank you, so the motion carries, uh, so again, uh, so we'll, we'll open the public hearing on this, um, for July fourteenth, seven PM. There will be, just need to clarify who that additional butter is, get the legal notice out to them, so that we can then hold the, the full public hearing and, and go forward on this one.
Is the requirement, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the legal notice two weeks prior to the hearing?
I believe that's correct, I'm seeing nods, yes.
Okay, and will we also, will we receive a summary of these comments tonight?
I'm seeing a, a notice, yes, on that one.
Yeah, I'll get those out.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Jen, it looks like you want to say something.
I was just gonna say, we should clarify that that meeting will be held in person at the town hall.
Thank you, thank you for the reminder, yes, uh, beginning with our next meeting, uh, the meetings will be in person, we're working on a possible hybrid method, but, um, at this time, that's not supported, so we'll, we'll be in meeting at town hall, you know, so watch for the agenda as to which, which room it'll be in.
Very good.
In current butters that have been noticed will not be renoticed, correct? If they're not here tonight?
If they're not here tonight, yeah, we continue to a date and time, sir.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin.
So the next item on the agenda is, uh, we should have a review of the conditional use permit draft. It'd be nice to get this finalized and have a vote on that tonight for acceptance if, if, uh, if we're at that point. So does anybody, uh, have that, that can pull that up on the, the screen? Joanna was kind enough to resend that out to everybody with, with, uh, the changes that we had requested. Again, to give everybody some, uh, background on that.
Can you see my screen now?
There it is, Ian, thank you. Um, so the background on this again is that, uh, so we actually, this is two, twofold, um, and now, now that town meeting has occurred, depending on, once that's actually closed, I think closed on Saturday, we, uh, we have conditional use permit language, will be in the, in the zoning ordinance twice now, once in, um, open space developments, and now also in the, uh, wetland overlay area for, um, buffers, I believe, is the second spot, so. So the need for this is imperative, so that applicants can actually use it and we can vote on them during meetings. So Ian, um, I think you had worked on this pretty extensively, uh, did you want to kind of highlight any changes or?
No, I think, I think I'm working out the most, yeah, I think, Joanna, this is from five twenty-six, is that the most current I think I have, yeah. So no, this is, um, some of this was taken from, I think, uh, we use Stratum as a good example, they've always had one, and there's a couple of the towns we took things from, um, but we've weaned it down to, to, taken a couple pages off of it, um, and oftentimes people submit, just like here, um, you can submit attached documents, and that's pretty common, so I expect some people to attach memos to some of these items. Um, and then the only thing since our last discussion is we removed, uh, the very end of the application before the signatures, there was just a little section here related to septics, and it was just an unrelated section that we just hadn't removed yet, so. Um, that was it, uh. And I guess, Joanna, the other thing I'm seeing is this just, uh, this is just a funny print with this extra watermark coming through.
Okay.
But I looked at this, uh, shortly after you sent it, and so I think with that removal of this erroneous section here that didn't apply to anything, um, I think this is pretty good, and I think within five pages we should be able to figure out what the applicant wants to do, so.
Appreciate that.
And I think, um, yeah, interesting, it's a whole, it's a full permit application, but, yeah, no, I think it, uh, looks good to me, and I don't know if anybody else had any comments on it.
I just want to say thank you, Ian.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Ian, I, I thought it looked good, I didn't have any comments to add.
Yeah, yeah, I think numbering and such was one of the last pieces of clarity, and that, that's been done, so, um. Jen, did you have any additional comment or anything, and anybody, anybody else on the board that has a commenter? It's free, I believe, after that, the, the formal process would be to probably have a formal vote of acceptance.
Do you want me to make a motion, Ed, if nobody else has anything?
More comment, yep.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept or approve, uh, the current draft of the conditional use permit for the town of Nottingham Planning Board, um, presently only used for open space developments and, um, approval of wetland impacts and some buffer impacts in the town of Nottingham.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, I'll take a roll call, Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Getting faster with that button, Tyler, and, uh, I'm a yes, that's a unanimous six-zero. So this is now official, uh, so any application coming before us that's gonna wanna, um, ask for a conditional use permit for either of those sections, uh, now I'll have to, uh, submit this as well. I don't think we ever talked about fees for this, um. I think we could do that later, but it might be something we consider, i, i, we probably should have a discussion with the town manager administrator, see if, uh, if we should consider a fee for that, I believe they're pretty standard with other towns.
Yeah, many towns have a standard fee, is ultimately, is that something the board of selectmen has to vote on to approve?
We, do we vote on recommending it and then they approve it, or, yeah? Seeing some nods, okay, maybe we can add that as a, uh, agenda item for the next meeting in July, and I can, I'll, 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 um, the board chair, Mr. Groenice, and, uh, town administrator to coordinate that a little bit. I'm making it up for myself. All right. Moving on, uh. Staff board member updates, I will, um, start with, I'm gonna use my screen order, so, Mr. McKinnon?
Uh, nothing to me, just congratulations to everybody that, uh, voted in officially yesterday. And the other thing I wanted to throw out now was, um, I know we, last fall, when we started talking about maybe some changes to the ordinance, you know, it kind of came in in the fall and kind of backtracked, SB two was new, so we knew the dates that we had to make the decisions by. I didn't know if, if we're just doing regular business, I don't know if in the next couple of meetings you want to throw on the agenda, maybe talk about the list of things that we do want to pursue, so we can maybe take a couple of months to look at things. I know building height is still one that the building inspector and fire chief would like to see get in the ordinance, and subsequently, I've actually encountered a couple of different towns that have found some good additional building height resources locally, so we might be able to revisit that, and it sounded like we needed more time for all parties to discuss, you know, what building, the building department's looking for and what the fire department's looking for, so I didn't know if, maybe we should get back on our agenda, the need for determining what those action items are. Um, I know we had a couple that we pushed from last fall as well, so I just thought maybe we could get down the agenda.
No, appreciate the reminder, and, and that's a, a good idea, that we had the list to review, um, which Joanna's kept, and I think S R P C has as well, um, to try to keep us on track of not falling behind, because it always seems like we have tons of time, and then, and then it comes right down to the wire, so, um, I appreciate that. And I don't think we can address any of that during our non-meeting meeting, it would have to be a regular one, so we, we can, the next light meeting, either in July or August, we should definitely have that added on, because we're, we're burning through the summer, so. All right, uh, Mr. Eaton, board selectman?
Uh, don't have anything tonight, uh, we had, uh, canceled our meeting for Monday, we'll meet next Monday, but I would also like to just, uh, thank everybody that, uh, you know, ran for office, and I'd like to thank especially everybody that worked the election, it was a long, long day, we didn't get out of it late till late last night, and like to congratulate our write-in candidate, Charlene Anderson.
Congratulations, thank you. All right, uh, Jen, you're up, S R P C.
S R P C, uh, annual meeting coming up on, uh, June twenty-fourth. You should have received, uh, some information on that, the theme is, um, pipelines to project funding, so we have some guest speakers that will talk about different funding avenues and how to have, uh, some shovel-ready projects, should funding ever pop up like it has suddenly popped up in the last several months.
Thank you, newest member, Ms. Anderson?
Uh, just congratulate Tyler, um, on his, um, continuation on the select board. And I do, I did have a question, I know that next meeting is a general, um, business meeting, but I'm wondering if we could, um, can we put, can we, can we say general business meeting from such and such time, and then workshop from such and such time? Can we do that? Let's get to work, kind of, you know?
It's a good question, uh, I mean, we have our official calendar, which I don't know if that, if, if we can change it. Um, I'm not opposed to that, I think it's a great idea if we're all together, um, to start doing some, some items.
All right, it was just a thought, if not, um, fine, I don't have anything else, I just, you know.
Let's, let, let Jen consider that one for us for a moment, putting her on the spot while I go to Mr. Davies, and we'll, we'll circle back to it, Mr. Davies?
I just want to, uh, thank Joanna for her service and wish her all the best.
Yeah, I'm getting there. I'll, I'll end with that, uh, Ms. Mooney?
Um, yes, thank you, um, congratulations to Charlene, Gary, and Tyler on their elections. Thank you so much, Joanna, you've been wonderful. I want to say on behalf of the, um, Conservation Commission that we started river quality testing on the North and Little River, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we've had conversations with the PLIA to monitor events on Potekaaway Lake to protect the shoreline buffer, and things look encouraging for that, and that's it, thank you.
All right, just one moment, I'm switching offices here. I apologize, everybody. You can watch me walk through my house as I run down the stairs. Bedtime for the, uh, little ones, so it's, this is the only downside of working at home. All right, so as alluded to, um, I'm gonna go up before I, before I put Joanna on the spot, our land use secretary, uh, very valuable land use secretary, Joanna Irondarcek, uh, has regrettably, um, tenured her resignation. This is her last meeting, uh, serving in that role, so I want to thank her wholeheartedly for, uh, everything she's done for us. She's, she's definitely kept us, uh, organized and, and taken over a lot of things, um. It's been a very busy several years in, in that office, and, uh, and she's seen it, and she's kept it steady even through, uh, COVID and, and the disruption that's come from that, and, and obviously the change in deliverable materials and everything, so, again, heartfelt, sincere thank you for, for Joanna, and I know she's not, I know she's not gone, she's gonna be in town, so. So if you see her, you can always put a bug in her ear and, and beg her to come back, but, um. Thank you very much, Joanna, for, for everything you, you do and have done for us in the town on, as, you know, and your other roles as well, on the voter checklist and, and everything, I'm sure your day was long yesterday, so, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Joanna.
Yeah, hear, hear. Thank you all, you've been great to work with.
Now I've done that, now it's, now it's your turn too, so now you can give us whatever updates you'd like.
Well, I guess the biggest update is there's still nobody to fill my positions, so we'll see how things go with that.
And in the board chair, uh, Mr. Groenice is working with town administration and I believe S R P C to kind of figure out a, a short-term plan for that, um, I guess we can't just close the office and, and, uh, and say that's it for now, and, and until we have somebody else in there, so.
and until we have somebody else in there, so we'll we'll figure something out, and there'll be communication to the board on that, so.
Definitely.
Really appreciate it, and Joanna worked feverishly to get all the minutes and everything caught up as much as possible so that we are, well, so that whoever does take that role isn't isn't buried.
I still have one more week to finish that up.
I appreciate appreciate that, too. So the the two zoning amendments that the board had recommended did pass at town meeting, so we're just, again, wait for that to finalize, and then we'll have updated zoning ordinance that'll get posted online. And then there'll be printed versions usually for every board member, which is usually helpful for when we are in person and don't have our computers with us to look everything up.
I do have one more thing. I didn't receive any edits on bylaws. So if, because that that's going to be addressed at your next meeting, so.
Yep, so everybody remember to look at the bylaws that Joanna had sent those out again. There have been some recommendations last year, I believe, of things to look at. I think Ms. Mooney had a few items. I'm gonna look at if there's anything we need to do differently to possibly incorporate language for hybrid meetings, if that becomes a possibility in town. But all right, moving, the next item on the agenda, sorry, I should have done this one first, is every meeting we hold a special spot in the meeting in case there's anybody from the public that has questions, comments, anything non-application-specific that we can answer. So we reserve time for this for anybody in the public. I don't see anybody here, so I'm gonna zoom right past that one, no pun intended, since we're in Zoom. And that brings us to the minutes. We have three sets, I believe, the sidewalk minutes, and then two sets of minutes for May twelfth and May twenty-sixth. I've submitted some edits to Joanna, what she's made, Ms. Mooney, I think, submitted some, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at those. We're not, but we can take action on those tonight if anybody feels so moved.
Mr. Veal, I'm really only comfortable with accepting the minutes for the sidewalk of May fifth. I have not had a chance to review the latest evolution of May twelfth and May twenty-sixth. So I propose that we, I move that we accept the minutes of the sidewalk of May fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
And table the minutes of the twelfth and the twenty-sixth?
Yes, please.
One second, bud.
That's Mr. McKinnon. Is there any any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call. Ian?
Yes.
Sue?
Sue, yes.
Sure, I know I'm using first names this time just to change it up. Charlene?
All abstained since I was not present.
Buzz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
I am a yes, so that's motion carries five zero one. And I think that's it. Joanna, what, so our next meeting obviously is, we'll be in person, everybody at town hall. Conference room one, I believe, would be where we would be. And then after, and that's our non meeting meeting for election of officers, review of bylaws and such. After that, the meeting is July fourteenth. Again, that one will be in person, likely conference room one. So it's baseball season, so give yourself some time to park and get in the office and find your way back to where town hall is. Joanna, do you know what we have on the agenda at this time? Is it looking like there's much? I believe we have a few continued items on there. I'll put you right on the spot every time.
That's okay.
For the last time.
So that is July. So you have the Kubota Trust continuation and the Baton and Putnam. I believe that is all. I will have to.
Yep, that's okay. And Jen, what was your, did you, do you have a thought on whether the non-meeting meeting, we could do as a, have a workshop afterwards if we notice it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Unfortunately, however, so let me put it this way. So it's only by your bylaws that you cannot, and there's one line in there that is what precludes you from doing anything else. And so in Article Four, Election of Officers in the Bylaws, Section One, that's where it specifies that the first regularly scheduled meeting following town elections or at a special meeting of the planning board held on the third Wednesday out in March will be utilized to elect officers, et cetera, et cetera. No regular business shall be conducted at this meeting. So if you simply struck that line, you could then continue to do other business that same date.
Okay, thank you. So we should look at that, and we should also look at adding clarifying language if town meeting ever gets moved and changed, and now we're SB two and all that kind of fun stuff, so. Oh, COVID. All right, so thank you for that, and I think it's a good idea for the future, yes, to possibly strike that, so we'll discuss that that meeting. At least give us the chance to utilize that meeting as as a time. So anybody else have any other, any other items?
Joanna, do we have any plans that are gonna need to be signed? I know we just approved a couple applications, you know, if there's anything between now and when you leave, might be some plans coming in?
Yes, I have two sets right now and a third set coming in next week. I've communicated with Dirk, because how we've been doing it since COVID. But yes, there are.
Yeah, so so far, right now, yeah, the chair, board chair has been signing. There's nothing that indicates that we all have to sign or even a coroner has to sign, so we've just done that in practice, and so once we get back to normal, it'll go back to just signing at meetings, so. All right, and like everybody else echoed, you know, thank you to all the election workers and everybody that did their their part yesterday, and everybody that voted, and and everybody for keeping it pretty civil and and everything, and there's just things on there, so it was it's nice to see the town kind of hold themselves together, so I appreciate it. Joanna, again, thank you so much for everything you do, and at this time, if anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's a free motion, anyway. All right, motion second. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, good night. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joanna.